Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I I am calling this meeting to order. I'll call for, I'll do a roll call attendance in a moment. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a remote manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website at needhamma.gov. Today, we'll be discussing Needham Parking Study that the engineering firm StanTech conducted. And then, in addition to that, we'll talk about some of the correspondence we've received. At this point, I'd like to call the roll. When I, when you hear your name, can you signify your attendance by saying here or present, please? Artie Crocker.
I hear Paul says he's on his way. I sent him a reply saying Zoom to make sure he doesn't, on his way doesn't mean he's driving there. So he says he's on his way. I don't know if that means he's driving to the, he's sad or he's coming, he's getting onto Zoom, but he says he's on his way, whatever that means.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, Artie. So Natasha Spata.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Obviously, the chair is present, and we understand from, from Artie that our colleague Paul Alpert will be joining in progress. Also with us today are town staff Alex Kle.
Present.
Who is our Assistant Town Planner and also Amy Helson.
Good morning.
Who is our Economic Development Manager. And again, we are delighted to have with us this morning from StanTech. Oh, there is Paul Alpert. If you could say present, then we know we have you.
Present.
Very good. We have all members here right in the nick of time. Also with us are two folks from StanTech. Is it Liza or Lisa Cohen?
Great question. It is Liza, like Minelli.
Liza, we have Liza Minelli with us in the house. And also Jason Schreiber, and I was just trying to think of another like eighties reference.
Got nothing, sorry.
But I, Schreiber, I'm thinking of the, I think that kids TV show anyways.
I grew up in the eighties. There's that.
Right, right?
Right.
Um, so we can, we can play eighties trivia another day. This morning, though, you're going to play parking trivia. And we're all keen to, you know, we're all keen to understand your observations. Ultimately, we're looking forward to, I think modifying our zoning bylaw based in part on these and other recommendations. What I'd like to do now, though, is throw this over to Amy. Amy, do you want to give us a bit of a background about how we were able to actually find ourselves with StanTech and what they were charged to do?
Sure. So in May 22, town meeting approved funding for a parking study focused on Needham Center and Needham Heights. Shortly thereafter, we began the RFP process and in October, the town contracted with StanTech. And they began their work shortly thereafter, starting to collect data and begin the process of analyzing the current parking situation and circumstances in both of these districts. And we held lots of public input as far as focus groups. We had a survey, but I won't, I won't be spoiling any of those results. I'm going to turn it over to Jason Schreiber, who is the principal and Liza, come the project manager for this parking study.
Thanks, Amy. I'll be brief. Liza's going to walk you through some of those findings and highlights and our draft recommendations for your code. Hopefully explaining as much as possible, but we mostly are interested in hearing your feedback and solving any of your questions or concerns. So Liza, take it away, and then we'll have a conversation. But if anybody really has a big question during this, you know, put up your hand or just speak out and we'll break, but we're happy to come back as need be as well. Liza.
All right. So everyone can still hear me, yes?
Yes.
Okay, wave if my headphones go out. They've been giving me trouble. So, well, we did introductions. So thanks for having us. I'll quickly walk through just the overall parking study, which had a lot of components beyond zoning. We're looking at regulations and inventory and all sorts of good stuff. And then we'll dive into some of the specifics from the zoning analysis component of that study. I'm going to do all of this quickly so that we can spend most of the time hearing from you all. But as Jason said, you know, if you have a question, I can see all of your little faces over here. So raise your hand or wave madly. So diving right in. Our schedule, as Amy pointed out, was began in November with inventory and data collection, ran through the winter. We had a public survey. We also had an in-person public workshop. I'll talk a little bit more about that. We essentially wrapped everything up at the end of March with a final report and presentation. So at the outset, we worked with the town to establish some goals for the study, which are listed here. And these are really important because they really guided our whole process and how we approached everything. So things like, obviously, improving the overall parking management system, but also looking at things like user friendliness and how can parking best support economic development rather than standing in its way? And a lot of these goals you'll see sort of run through a lot of our recommendations in the full report, which I will not talk through today, but I do have if you want to look at it. So our first step in any parking study is to go out and figure out which, what parking exists on the ground, and that includes both publicly, publicly owned and privately owned, publicly available and restricted parking in order to fully understand parking demand. So we did that for Needham Center and Needham Heights. And again, there's a ton more detail in the report if you really want to nerd out like we do. But this is our inventory for Needham Center. And the pie chart on the left is generally showing parking by regulation. So you can see that the majority of parking in Needham Center is off-street and is what we call restricted parking, which is essentially if Liza arrives in Needham Center in her car and I'm looking for parking and I don't know the system at all. There's a sign that says, you know, this is Amy's parking only or parking for this establishment only. So that's sort of how we make that distinction. So the map on the right is generally showing our study area. And you can see where the publicly available lots are and then the restricted in the dark blue. So the next component was then to go out and count all of the cars in all of the spaces, which we did, I believe in November because we were racing to do it before everything became free in December. And so we counted, the map on the right is showing occupancy by facility. So it's kind of a heat map. You can see the legend on the bottom left of the screen, but essentially any parking facility that's shown in the kind of cool blue colors represents a facility that's 60% utilized or less. So we would call that underutilized. And then anything in that green color is something that is what the industry calls ideal occupancy. So about one in every 10 spaces is available for the next person, but otherwise the parking facility, whether it's a a block of on-street parking or off-street is being well-used. This map in particular is showing your midday, which is the, the time that is the highest demand in Needham Center. And at that time, you can see in the bar chart on the left, which, sorry, there's a lot of information on this slide. Bar chart on the left is showing our counts by time of day. So we counted at 8:00 AM, at 10:00, at noon, all the way through to 6:00 PM. And so at that noon time, the parking system overall is about 60% full. So that means that even though, you know, right on Great Plain Avenue, it might be challenging to find a spot. Overall, there's almost 700 spaces that are empty at that midpoint in the day. And this is what we see in most downtowns where we do parking counts, this type of pattern.
Liza, I have a quick question, Jean.
Sure.
Looking at these maps, and I'd looked at them before, but hadn't noticed this. The boundaries of the study area go a little bit beyond the boundaries of the commercially zoned area.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and we try to do that somewhat to capture spillover as well. Like, are there some places where people are parking in order to save a couple bucks or what have you? So we try to think about just the general demand associated with the downtown core.
Right, because I can see, for example, the Baptist Church, the Y, Y MCA is in the area you're starting, even though it's outside the zone, yeah.
Yeah, good point. Go ahead, Paul.
So am, am I correct in what you're talking about is parking overall, not just the public parking, but also the private parking that's not accessible to the public?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and I'll get into the public parking specifically in a couple of slides.
Okay, thank you.
So rolling on down. This is probably what you all hear about the most, right? So this map is now showing 6 o'clock, which also happens to be when all of your metered parking, best parking, front door parking suddenly becomes free. And at that time, the where the black line is on Great Plain Avenue and Chapel Street, that's what we called kind of the quote-unquote core area. And that is pretty full. That's 90% full at 6:00 PM. That makes sense. Folks going to dinner, what have you. But you could see all of the lots surrounding it have now cooled off. They're kind of that cool blue color and things are much less busy. So it's these types of imbalances that we try to look at and understand and figure out if we can rebalance things so that the entire system is used. And we spread out that parking crunch a little bit. So Paul, getting to your question, looking specifically at publicly available parking. The chart on the left is showing that for the center. Chart on the right is showing that for the heights. So today, you know, your peak for publicly available parking, again, probably reflects that kind of evening dinnertime peak. Things are about 75% full. So still 100 spaces available. Most of them, again, around kind of the periphery and those on-street spaces are super busy. And in the heights, the peak for public parking was more midday. So 12 o'clock.
There's a question on the heights.
Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Is the heights including the MBTA parking lot?
Yes. I think that got included. I think we, yeah, no, we would count that as publicly available parking because anyone could technically use it. They just have to pay. So we did the same breakdown for restricted parking, and I believe there are a few other breakdowns in the report to start to see where some of this occupancy or excuse me, availability is. So the center is shown on the left here. So there, you know, at that 6:00 PM time where your public parking is nearing full, you have almost 900 spaces available in restricted parking. So again, we start to ask ourselves, are there ways that we can start to open up that parking and start to use it better because it's taking up a lot of space in your, you know, dense walkable downtown area and similar questions for the heights. We also did a public survey. And Amy worked really hard and got the word out. We got over 1,000 responses. Some of those are the same people because you could take the survey twice, one for the heights, one for the center. But we were really excited. It's a really amazing survey response rate, and you can see some of our big takeaways here. We often use the survey as a way to get at how long people want to stay and how that matches up with your time limits. So, you know, we heard that most people spend less than two hours on a typical visit. Another thing that I'll point out is about half of customers in Needham Center are parking within one or two blocks of their destination, which is really, really close. That's pretty amazing. That might not be what you hear about. And 15% of employees are parking on street, which again, you know, might be something that isn't the most desirable depending on where on street they're parking. We also held an open house in person, which was really fun. I think we had over 50 participants who came and could point at these, those utilization maps that you all just saw, or inventory maps and kind of tell us the story behind the story of parking. We also put together a couple of round tables, one for Needham Center and one for Needham Heights with local merchants who gave us their perspective. So that was really helpful as part of the study. So overall, there's a lot more behind this. Check out the report if you are interested, but these are our key findings, which were that there's definitely space even at peak time, but it's not always easy to find. Some of the walking, just from some of the remote parking is a challenge. There's not a crosswalk in the right place, or it doesn't feel safe to cross the street. So that could be contributing to the parking crunch. One thing we, that stood out to us is there's relatively few long-term options for people in the center and the heights. If you're coming for more than two hours, you don't have a ton of options until after 2:00 PM when the permit parking ends. And generally, your pricing doesn't always match demand. So I pointed out that example of Great Plain Avenue, you know, those are like your prime parking spaces. And after 6:00, they are free. So any questions?
Would you go back to that slide for just a second?
Sure, yeah.
When it says hard to, hard to walk to remote parking. I mean, obviously, in general, I know what you mean by that. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, I think we look specifically at, I want to say the Chestnut Street Lot and the crossing there to be able to get just to the, from businesses to that lot and how, you know, it's not actually that far, but the, the crossing can feel a bit challenging. You're crossing a pretty wide road. There are a couple of places where there's not sidewalks. So folks may not feel comfortable parking and then going back to their car after wherever it is that they've visited. So that's kind of thing.
When you say the Chestnut Street Lot, are you referring to the one beside the Unitarian Church of Massala Art? That is a Chestnut Street Lot?
I'm sorry. Yeah, Chestnut Street Lot over here and Dedham Avenue Lot, which is actually the one I was thinking of.
So, okay, so the Chestnut Street Lot is being, you know, excuse me, that's being defined as hard to walk to?
The Dedham, I mixed myself up. The Dedham Avenue Lot is being defined as hard to walk to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but also I'll just comment on that. If you're parking in the Chestnut Street Lot, but you want to cross Chestnut Street to get to the Learning Express, for example. Chestnut Street is a wide street and it's a very busy street. And if you're crossing in the, you know, if you don't want to go to the corner and use the the crosswalk, it can be a challenge to cross Chestnut Street.
That's a very good point. We identified actually a crosswalk that could go in there. It seems like once there was a temporary crosswalk there. So it's something to think about. It's a good point.
Is that, is there also an opportunity for a sidewalk if you're on this map? And you see the Chestnut Street map, the Chestnut Street Lot in green. And oftentimes, we'll park there and then we'll go around the corner on Great Plain. You kind of make a Z. You go around Latina or to the Little Spoons, the Thai restaurant or Abbott's. And again, like Paul's saying, I suppose we could just walk up. But it seems counterproductive because it's a, it's a longer walk. And instead, if there was a crosswalk to cross over that intersection. You know, that pops us out on the other side near, I think it's a 50 Dedham Ave.
Yeah, exactly. That is exactly what we were thinking. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Cool. All right. I'm going to keep rolling through this. So we had a component of this that was focused on zoning. So we did a review of your code with a focus on Needham Center and Needham Heights. And our top findings are listed on this slide, which are essentially that today's zoning requirements for parking minimums are relatively high, and I'll explain that in a minute. Part of the reason why we were asked to do this in the first place is that we understand you're getting a lot of requests for waivers in these particular study areas. There are relatively few options for folks for developers to have some flexibility in the parking that they are required to build based on context. And what you have some flexibility in other parts of Needham, but it doesn't necessarily apply to Needham Center and Needham Heights. So I'll walk through each of these findings.
We go back, Liza, one more, please?
Yeah.
Oh, no, forward. There we go. waiver requests are frequent indicating the requirements do not match the market. In other words, in other words, there's much more the requirements are more restrictive than, than necessary. That's the conclusion, right?
Well, they're more restrictive than what people want to be building.
But also based on the, but also based on the fact that we have 37% occupancy at a peak period, sorry, 37% vacancy. That would suggest, you know, in the center and I think in the heights, 12% vacancy at its peak. That it suggests that we have almost an oversupply of inventory in relation to the demand.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
May I make a comment here?
Sure.
I wouldn't say that our waiver requests are frequent. I would say that our waiver requests in the center and we don't deal with the heights. That's, that's the ZBA. So I can't speak for the heights, but the planning board deals with the center. Our frequency for waiver requests in the center are 100%. Because there's actually very little room for private parking to, to build a development and put parking on your own on your own property. So we're basically, in the center, we're basically dealing with public property. Nobody can meet the requirements because nobody's got the room.
Yeah.
Center.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll show you. We have some of those requests actually on some of the following slides.
And let me, let me make a point about that and about the table that lists those requests. It, it, the report throughout refers to waivers being granted by the zoning board of appeals. But in most cases, it is the planning board granting the waivers. And our, our zoning bylaw is very complicated when it comes to figuring that out. And just this morning, I was going through and you know, putting a little sticky on the places where it indicates that it's the planning board that grants the waiver. But I think if you want to just simplify it, you could say planning board or zoning board of appeals in your report. And, but in the chart, I think you, Alex could probably help you in filling in the column on indicating which board granted the waiver.
That'd be great. Yeah, we definitely want to have that be accurate.
My memory is most of those waivers, if not all of them, were granted by the planning board.
I noticed that too.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me dive into this so we can chat. So relatively quickly, when we are looking at zoning codes, we use the Bible here of parking demand, which is the Institute for Transportation Engineers Parking Generation. It's a really scintillating volume full of parking data. But what's important to know about it, this is what engineers use, you know, across the board to estimate parking demand. And it's real demand that's captured nationwide and actually some sites in Canada as well. But the majority of it, if you look at the quote on the right-hand side, is collected in kind of suburban-y standalone locations. So even this, which is considered to be like the Bible of where parking demand is in the United States is typically keyed to a more suburban setting than, for example, you have in Needham Center and Needham Heights. And I could go on about IT forever, but no one wants that on a Friday. So our, what we did as a preliminary look at your code, though, was to take just your base zoning requirements and compare them to what is recorded in ITE for kind of national demand for each of these uses. And overall, our findings show that your requirements, which are in the first column here compared to ITE are actually higher than what those kind of suburban standards would indicate. So that was step one. We also did some counts of our own to capture residential demand. And separately, Metropolitan Area Planning Council had done some counts. We were able to grab those as well to understand Needham specific residential demand at multifamily establishments. And that came in, you know, depending on which one you look at and how you weight the average. You could come up with multiple different numbers here, but the two developments that we did count at that were close to Needham heights were more like under one per unit. And then 50 Dedham Avenue closer to the center was 1.3 per unit, but overall, most of these counts are below what your zoning would actually require for multifamily units.
I'd like to correct something. If you go back, I know, I think, I know this data came from me. There are 108 units at Rosemary Ridge, but I checked yesterday and it turned out I was incorrect. I always had thought 105 units. But when I spoke with you about it, I took like this 36 units on each floor. If you multiply by three, that's 108. Previously, I had counted mailboxes, 105 mailboxes. You know what? On each floor, there was no unit number 20. Now, you think, you know, is 20 an unlucky number or something? No, you know, there is a unit 13, but in any event, it actually is 105 units.
Okay.
Sorry to have given you misinformation.
No problem, Paul.
The striking, the striking observation for me is that the demand is less than one car per unit. And I think that's telling when we're dealing with multifamily, you know, development. You know, we'll have a number of projects coming up immediately for us to chat about and that's a, that's a really striking observation. Thank you for identifying this part of it.
Yeah. I think it's helpful to have broken out the, in this chart, the particular developments. And I think it'd be nice to have that in report because each of these is located differently. Rosemary Ridge is particularly close to public transit. Hamilton Highlands is a little further, further away. You know, et cetera. So and what, you know, Hamilton Highlands is rental, Rosemary Ridge is condo, 50 Dedham Avenue is condo. You don't need to say that in the report, but people know that, you know, and will interpret it that way. So I'd like to, I'd like to see this, this particular table in the report.
Okay.
Okay.
This is something we're going to be dealing with when we go forward with some more, some apartment zoning over the next year in our town.
Yes.
Okay. So when I read the report and I looked at our requirement of say, one, one and a half spaces per per unit. We're taking into account in that number visitor parking. And I wasn't clear in the report whether your your numbers, your counts were taken at a time when there, there might be a lot of visitor parking there as opposed to like, you know, early, early in the morning, at 10 o'clock in the morning, it's probably practically all residential parking. Whereas, you know, at 7:00 at night, there, there might be a lot of visitors, visitor cars at Rosemary Ridge. And, and so it wasn't clear to me whether the numbers reflected visitor versus those, those, those who live there.
Yeah. So our, our numbers currently, and Jason may have something to add to this, but they were taken in late in the evening. So we're trying to actually capture the peak of residential demand. And if you look at that ITE book that I referenced earlier, what usually happens, they actually provide rates by time of day. So that peak residential demand that you might observe in the middle of the night really trails off in the middle of the day. It goes down to about 30% before coming back up in the evening. So if you account for, for peak residential demand and, you know, whatever visitors were there overnight, you're typically going to account for the, the peak demand associated with any residential development. Jason, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that's, that's right. And I think what's interesting from our perspective is that always in the evenings is when you need to count and be prepared for and be aware of. But in particular, a place like 50 Dedham, where there might be somebody else who wants to park a car, maybe it's more expensive housing, a couple of units have a couple of cars, I don't know. In Needham Center, they can't. So there actually is nowhere in the downtown where they can buy a space to park overnight other than if they can find some private landowner. There's no way that a resident can get your permits. So that's another part of our recommendation. It's not a zoning recommendation, but it's another critical part of this equation. Because occasionally that'll happen. And I think the point that we're just trying to make is your minimum, there's no reason for it to be 1.5. But people may build above that if they want to. That's certainly fine. But your minimum requiring everybody to have much more than they're using doesn't make sense.
Cool question on the Rosemary Ridge thing, or actually in general, when, 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 when was this study taken? What time of the year was this taken?
This was November.
So, so like, so one question I have is what, uh, what part is taken into account as far as two things? A, what, how many units were actually occupied at the time or even rented or bought? And what, and what percentage of units are, um, tenants maybe gone during the winter time or go, just maybe gone during that time of year? So.
I can, I think I can probably best respond to that with regard to Rosemary Ridge since that's, since that's where I live. Um, uh, if, if people are in Florida or something like that, um, uh, uh, what, what, what seem, what happens is, and again, and I can check this with our concierge, they leave their car in the parking lot for months. Uh, so it's there. Um, and, um, you know, they're required to leave the key so that the, the car could be moved for snowplowing purposes. So I think when it, and especially when it comes to November, probably people aren't gone yet anyway. I would think that would be a good month to get a good count. Cause people aren't on the Cape, people aren't in New Hampshire, they're not on, in Florida either. Um, and, um, also, we have a hundred percent occupancy here. That's very rare, uh, and, and if, if it's, it's only for a few weeks between somebody moves out and somebody moves in. But it's really, it's a, you know, it's a condominium and it's about twenty-five percent rented and a ver- very high occupancy.
Question. I saw Natasha had a hand.
Yeah, I have, I have a question. Um, so what I'm getting from this is that the Hamilton Highlands and two seventy-five Second Avenue have, um, the demand is a lot less, but they're not in the mixed use. Uh, literally in the mixed use commercial area per se. And, and whatever's in the mixed use, you know, the Rose, sorry, Rosemary Ridge and, and two seventy-five, sorry. They're not exactly in an area with commercial like right adjacent to it per se. So it seems like those areas have a le- less of a demand. The Hamilton Highlands and the fifty Dedham Ave have the higher demand. And is that because the waivers for the restaurants have been, have happened near there?
I, I, I actually think in reality, you're, cause you know, you can certainly walk into the heights just as easily from Rosemary Ridge as you can from Hamilton Highlands. I think what really influences parking demand has often to do more with the particulars of that type of product, whether it's at a higher or lower rate relative to others, the particular types of residents who choose to live there. Sometimes whether the, the building that itself has got those types of adjacencies like you're talking about. I certainly know with a place like fifty Dedham, you know, that's going to be a higher end. So there might be people who have multiple cars. But in, in aggregate, when we look at these things, and this is what's I think more interesting about MAPC's study. They had this one count here at two seventy-five, but they actually counted dozens across metro Boston. And their average across the whole region was like point eight or something like that. Um, and it's really, yeah, this is, uh, that, this is actually the output from that study. And so what you, you'll see here that, you know, in some cases in Newton, they had a few that were above one. And then Medford, there was a few that were there, but then others, you know, Revere is low or Waltham is low. Um, you know, you can see that it's up and down, right? And I think what we're just trying to reflect is that in all those cases, you know, there was probably too much supply. Um, but in most of those cases, they were still not as much supply as you're requiring. So you're requiring even more than all those places that actually still had even less. And I think that on average is something for zoning to be concerned about.
So the ones that are half of what the other ones are, it's not location necessarily, it's, um, that's, that's relevant to that because could you have visitors that are going to the restaurants nearby or something like that that would cause that or not necessarily?
I don't expect, I don't expect that we're getting in usually what's controlled, private parking, much visitors into those. It could happen once in a while, but generally where it says, parking, most people keep out. It's got actually more to do with just the market for that type of product than anything. We see some really like high-end downtown condos that have, that are pretty well parked up. We also see them almost not parked at all. So it just really depends on the type of clientele and it can vary.
Just seems like you have one extreme or the other, right? There's nothing in between. It's like point six or point eight or one or over one, right? So it, just trying to figure out what, what makes that discrepancy.
It's oftentimes the size of the complex too. Two seventy-five is a larger, um, building. And so what, by nature of a larger building and greater density, there's more opportunity to just do a lot of extra little small trips nearby. You're often more oriented towards a transit type of lifestyle. Oftentimes larger buildings are younger folks who don't have as many cars. And those are factors as well. A lot of that demographic is part of this as well.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may, uh, your report, um, on, um, mentions with regard to, uh, uh, Second Avenue, on that there's a large, uh, percentage of affordable units. And that, uh, um, occupants of affordable units are less likely to have it, to own an automobile. Or to, who are, as compared with other occupants of other units might have two autos.
A second, Jean. So that's, that's something that we can look at for the MBTA communities, right? We're creating, trying to create more affordable housing in an area with, um, that's accessible to public transportation. So understanding that there's an op, that there may be an opt, you know, not an option, but that, that there's an opportunity for, for less parking requirements is something that we need to vet.
Yes, however, um, the only, um, one we have that actually is, uh, in our business area is fifty Dedham Avenue. And it really surprises me that the demand at fifty Dedham Avenue is so high.
But it's a small building, but it's a small building, right?
Yeah, what?
Right, that's higher end.
What different, it's a higher end.
Higher end and small.
Yeah, it has, well, it has twelve and a half percent affordable as compared with twenty-five percent. But, uh, still, I'm, I'm surprised and, um, it, when we go trying to make the argument that we only need one, uh, parking space per unit as a standard. Um, it, it, you know, it's, it's hard to do in the face of that data of for Dedham Avenue. Um,
Well, we, we also need to know, I mean, for example, fifty Dedham Ave, you know, what are the size of the units? I mean, the size of the units would have some understem connection with, you know, how many cars may be in the unit? How many bedrooms are in the unit? Because we're talking about units, but is your bedrooms, for example, in this case, or just units? You know, one, I'd have two, two bedrooms.
A, a general rule of thumb we as transportation planners and having looked at so many communities and residential parking always try to apply is looking at the broader community and the broader averages of what's seen. Because everything you're pointing to, yes, bedrooms can vary, income can vary, location can vary, the individual demand. As we start to look at the breadth of occupancy, that's where we're seeing below one per unit on average. I think when you have a code that gets to be very specific about those distinctions on bedrooms and size and proximity, that level of complexity is actually usually something that makes it a little bit harder for development to proceed. Because now the private developer is trying to figure out how they should move and manipulate levers. When really what you're trying to do is just make something that looks nice or that brings in units. And honestly, there isn't a developer out there who is going to build something, especially in the residential world with insufficient parking and walk away. They know that they need to be able to sell or lease those units and have parking. And so I, I suspect if anything with fifty Dedham, that developer probably also looked at the fact that there's a large public lot next door and had a faith in the general numbers that say one per unit has been working pretty well. And from what we understand, there actually are no, uh, there's a owner or two there, a renter or two there who actually doesn't have a car, just others who have a couple of cars that have wound up in this situation. I think the key is if you were to suddenly model everything off of your worst-case scenario, well, that's what you've got, which is a huge oversupply. So modeling off your worst-case scenario is sort of saying, hey, it's always going to be Christmas. Which case every downtown will look like a shopping mall, not like a downtown. So we try to be something that's a little bit more based on the average.
These, so, so I just want to, sorry, just a couple of little things. And that is, it's interesting, the, the opposite direction that Hamilton Highlands goes over Rosemary Ridge, that's kind of interesting. Why they're in, literally they're in opposite directions of each other. Not sure what the reason for that is. And the other is, so right in the right, literally it's almost across the street from two seventy-five Second, Second Ave is the, but the Charles, the Charles, not Charles River Court, I forget exactly what it's called, is a fairly large, um, apartment complex.
Charles River Landing.
Charles River Landing, you know, angling across. I'm curious what that is, because that's, and, and do we know the occupancy of the two seventy-five? Is it still a relatively new, new place? It's just, is, is that, is anything abnormal about that, that two forty-two? Total units or three ninety, is that unusual at all from your experience?
Yeah, uh, and that's, you know, it's helpful to have the counts from the other MAPC locations as well.
Yeah, because I mean, literally diagonally across the street is the Charles River Landing.
Can I make, can I make a suggestion? We spent a lot of time on this particular slide. We can come back to it, but I think Liza wasn't finished with where she was going and some of her observations and findings. So I just want to make sure that we're advancing a little bit and then we can come back to this to go into more detail.
I, I just want to say, I think the major point is taken, no matter what our questions are, which is that one point five cars per unit is, is an excessive requirement. I think that's, that's definitely the conclusion that is coming back to us. It may not be one, but it's certainly not one point five.
Yeah, so, uh, thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll try to roll through the rest of this quickly and then we can dig into other things. Um, but we're gonna talk about that with regard to your other rates as well, really quickly. So, um, this again detailed in the report, but one of, uh, we essentially tried to do an experiment where we said, okay, let's take all the uses in Needham Heights and apply the zoning to those uses based on existing square footage by use. And, and how much parking would that say should be built in Needham Heights? And that's what this chart is roughly saying. It's saying a lot of other stuff, but I, I won't go into detail. Um, but there's time of day across the bottom and there's estimated parking demand is the, uh, what is that, the Y-axis? So if we applied your zoning directly to what we estimate to be the land uses in Needham Heights, you would need something like thirty-five hundred parking spaces in Needham Heights. Um, your existing parking supply is closer to eighteen hundred, as we pointed out before. Um, and then if I roll through to this next slide, which again, lots of stuff on here, happy to dig into this.
Liza, I thought the parking supply of one thousand seven seventy-one was for the center, not the heights.
Uh, you're right, these should say Needham Center. Uh, my apologies. Yes, this is Needham Center. Um, so, and then if we look at the actual counts for Needham Center, let me see if I can fix this so you're not all staring at a mislabeled slide. Uh, if you look at the actual counts for Needham Center, which are shown in these little gray bars down here, um, across the time of day, you can see how it all compares. So the Needham Center requirements are at the top of the chart and the actual counts are way down in these little bars at the bottom of the chart. And of course, they vary by time of day.
Wow.
So, yeah, so that was our.
That was a great wow. Back up to that chart. Take it in for another five seconds. You asked for three times as much as actually is used, well above industry standards and twice as much as your actual supply. Okay, now we can proceed.
We asked three times. With the, your conclusions, uh, Jason, again, we, uh, asked for three times what?
Three times what is actually ever used.
Yeah, we need twelve hundred and we ask for thirty-five hundred.
Thank you very much. I'm just making notes.
Only comment that I'm going to make, if I may make it here, is that this really varies from park, from, from, from municipal parking lot to municipal parking lot. Um, the Chestnut Street Lot, I think in, in and of itself is problematic. And I'm going to give two, two things, and I know it's anecdotal. And, um, one is that I have a friend who owns a, a store, um, in that, in that complex, and he's always complaining that his customers don't have enough parking. That they, that they come and they can't find a parking space, so they leave. And that's a problem. Um, now, I, I work in downtown Boston, so I'm never there during, during peak hours, Monday through Friday. But I happen to be there at nine thirty on Monday morning, um, or maybe it was Tuesday morning. Um, cause I happened to be in town and I got a call from CVS saying, saying that a prescription was ready. So, so I, I went there nine thirty weekday morning, there were two open spaces.
No, you are absolutely right, and our data reflects exactly that. But that is a management problem, not a zoning problem, because right across the street is the Dedham Lot and it's practically empty at the same time. How do I get more people who are parking in the Chestnut Street Lot to move over to the Dedham Street Lot and create some availability? And that's what our parking management recommendations address. There's plenty of parking. It just, is it front door or not for some users and some, and they can park across the way because they're just long-term all.
Oh, I would also say that I, I, I'm, I'm a long-term Needham resident. I never think of that Dedham Ave parking lot.
Right.
Ever. Right, never.
About to say, that's a problem of getting the word out.
Well, if I may.
Yep.
So one of the things that we, that my colleagues, I don't think have necessarily seen, although it, you know, was, uh, make sure that Amy and, and Alex send it to us, is they've, their final report, which they've already submitted to the select board, identifies thirteen recommendations that, uh, improve overall the parking condition for these two districts, the Heights and the Center. Those thirteen recommendations include zoning reform as one, which obviously is squarely in our remit, which we'll deal with after. Uh, but the other recommendations relate specifically already to what you and Paul, you're talking about, which is we need to improve the awareness of the parking supply. And we also need to improve access to the parking supply and optimize the supply. And there are a number of recommend, specific recommendations, for instance, freeing up what was restricted parking in certain areas at certain times of the day and making it become publicly available afterwards. And between those efforts and a change in the requirement or zoning bylaw by point one, I will see a significant improvement, you know, through, you know, throughout the town, including Segaloff Jewelers. You know, your friend, uh, Paul, you know, with the jewelry store. And so it's part of the solution is zoning. And, uh, ultimately the point that we're making, like you concluded all before was our standard is, and Natasha, you just alluded to it as well, is wildly out of sync with the demand. Um, but there are other recommendations that help with the parking, uh, access that are outside of our scope, that they've recommended some improvements and changes on to the select board.
Adam, thank you for doing a better job of representing our work than we could have think.
All right, let me see if I can blast through these remaining slides, because I want to get to what we're thinking for zoning recommendations and get all of your reactions. So this is just a list of those waivers that we talked through earlier, um, which you can see the, the biggest thing is this final column here, which is that essentially, uh, Paul, I believe you were saying this, that it's about a hundred percent of folks come and say, hey, we can't build any parking. Um, and those waivers are typically granted. Um, so we tried to look at where your zoning code does offer flexibility to build less parking. Um, we know that there's some flexibility related to, okay, you can use off-site parking to meet a parking requirement if it's within three hundred feet and under the same ownership. Um, there's some bicycle parking spaces required, some transportation demand management required, um, in certain areas, but not currently in Needham Center or Heights. Um, and you do have an in-lu fee that exists, so we're, you know, interested to hear more about that and see if that could be activated a bit more. Um, we looked at overlays, again, lots more detail on this in the report. But, um, the short story is this chart on the right is trying to separate out what flexibility those overlays offer by right, which is the top three rows of this chart. So small retail, small change of use, um, and a little bit of relief for buildings that are multi-story. Um, and then. Um, and then there's some uh, special permit options, but again, that requires a whole special permit. Process. Um, so that could perhaps perhaps be onerous for both parties. So these overall are recommendations for you all to consider in zoning. That would just introduce some flexibility for the types of developments that you may want to foster in Needham Center, Needham Heights, and potentially elsewhere in town. Um, so this is that M A P C chart on the right. Um, again, that's a super interesting study. It's called Perfect Fit Parking. They're in the midst of updating it, but they've collected. Residential demand data really across the state and in lots of different settings. So it's worth a reference as you're reconsidering reconsidering some of your. Parking requirements. Um, so I'll just walk through each of these. Quickly, we have a few examples and things. Um, so one of our top recommendations, of course, related to what we've all been talking about, is to consider. Reducing or eliminating your parking minimums. You may not follow the parking news as closely as we do. But a lot of cities are starting to rethink having parking minimums at all. Um, another thing that you can do is move toward parking maximums. So essentially saying you can build up to this amount, but no more. Um, and that's a nice way to actually encourage the type of development that you want to have happen in dense mixed use areas. Um, we would recommend that you think about. Incorporating mixed use parking reductions in your code overall, as well as for Needham Center and the Heights. And that essentially means that. Instead of if I'm building a development that includes um, office and housing, for example, instead of requiring developers to calculate the parking. Requirements for each of those uses separately and add them up, which typically adds to more than you would need. Um, to. Allow people to run that calculation by time of day and build the maximum that that results in. So for example. Uh, I was talking about how residential demand tails off in the middle of the day while people are at work. Some of those parking spaces could in fact be used to support a daytime demand such as office. Um, and you can set up a calculation in your code like Summerbell has done. We love this table because it's so simple. There are some more complex tables out there for sure. Um, or having folks submit a shared parking analysis. Hello, next slide. Um. You do have this offsite parking option in your code, but. You know, looking at Needham Center and Needham Heights, one of the great things about them is that they are so walkable. Um, and you have parking that's within, you know, a three to four minute walk of most destinations. So we would propose that you increase the walk radius. For using parking that's not on the same site to meet parking requirements. To closer to two thousand feet, which can be, you know, up to a a five or six minute walk. Um, and remove the requirement that that parking be under the same ownership, which probably is preventing some of that underutilized parking. From meeting other parking requirements today. Um, you have this provision for transportation demand management, um, which essentially is. Planning for people to get to developments. In ways other than driving and parking a car. Um, and by increasing and enhancing those requirements. Um, it means that your your zoning or your transportation impact requirements. Are no longer only planning for vehicle access, but also supporting people who. Take trips by walking, by biking and by using transit. It doesn't necessarily mean that. Every person accessing a given development. Has to do that all of the time, but you just want to make sure that you're equally supporting all transportation options. Um, this one I'd be interested in hearing more about from your perspective. We understand that you do have an in lieu fee program, so potentially developers could pay into. A fund instead of providing parking. Um, our understanding is that it's not super well used at the moment. Um, so. Reconsidering that, um, there are a lot of advantages to in lieu fee programs. Probably the main one for us is simply that uh, it creates a pot of money for you to do more coordinated improvements, whether that's. You know, plowing it back into a more centralized parking facility, improving the parking facilities that you have. Or even multimodal improvements to help improve overall mobility. But instead of developer of developers doing kind of spot improvements here and there, you can kind of gather a whole pot of money. And do those in a coordinated way. And with that, I made it through. So um, be curious your thoughts. I'll go back up to this summary slide, but um, on some of these recommendations and any questions we can answer. Uh, Paul, I think I saw your little. Cartoon hand first.
Thank you. Um. Thank you for a great presentation. And thank you for a great report that I actually read through. Before today's, before today's meeting.
Well done. Gold star.
Very informative. Um. Number one. My comment on. Something like increased um. Um. Bicycle rack requirement um. To encourage other modes of transportation. I think we're finding that if you build it, they will come. Doesn't. Doesn't work. Doesn't necessarily work, but in a lot of ways doesn't work. We have a lot of. A lot of requirements in where. Where uh, we require. That they include a certain number of bicycle spaces. I'm not sure that they're utilized. Um, I I don't, I don't think that they are. Um, I think the entire public transportation system in the Boston area, granted, the M B T A is not being run very well. But um, we have a problem where people are not using the public transportation.
We we entirely agree, although I will say. Needham needs bike facilities first before anybody will use them. So that's another parallel. I don't know if zoning can necessarily influence that, but you. You need bike lanes, you need bike paths before my wife will let my kids. Bike on your streets for starters. So and I'm a bicyclist. So so there's a lot more than just the bike parking that's going to be needed.
That's that's an excellent point. We do. We do need more bicycle lanes. We also need more drivers that adhere to those bicycle lanes. Which is, I think that can be a problem. But that's a problem of our Boston drivers that has existed since since the automobile was invented. I think somebody mentioned it was probably Adam that you are making like thirteen recommendations and only one of them has to do with the planning board. I'm wondering whether it makes sense at some point in the near future. To have a joint zoning, um, a joint planning board. Select Board. Meeting. Where the public is. Invited and well, well advertised. That we're having a meeting to discuss the parking recommendations. Um, or whether, since it's so heavily weighted to the select board, that the planning board doesn't really need to be there. But uh, um. Uh, I think that that uh. Uh, once. Once your report is finalized, which it sounds like it has been and been submitted to the select board, um. Uh, having, having a well-publicized. Hearing to discuss it um. With the public. Especially those who responded to your parking um. Uh, questionnaire to begin with. Because they're already invested. Is probably a good idea. To get the word out. That this is being done. Those were my comments.
Great. Uh, um, Jean. Oh, you're muted. Jean, you're muted.
Thanks. In Needham, you can bicycle on our sidewalks and children often do. Um, except in the center, which makes sense because we have more pedestrians in the center. It can be a little scary if you're walking down our sidewalks and uh, your kids are coming on their bikes. But it is, you know, safe for them. Um. I um, I like the idea of a joint meeting that Paul mentioned. I wonder if it should include the zoning board of appeals as well as the select board. And um. I always forget the name of this committee is an important one, the Economic Development Committee. Um, it it. Include.
Uh, we had a conversation yesterday about. Uh, the C E A um.
Council of Economic Advisers, yes.
And this the C E A met yesterday, which I serve on for the planning board. And um. Uh, have made a number of priority recommendations to the select board to focus on relating to awareness and access. And left the zoning priority. You know, for the, you know, for the remit of the uh, planning board, because that's the work of the planning board.
Yeah, um. And then my last comment um, is is really a question about a couple of recommendations on pages twenty four and twenty five of the report. It suggested. If uh, where a developer wants to build parking at a rate. That the community feels would result in underutilization. In other words, the developer or feels market forces uh, would want the developer to. Uh, build more parking, but the town isn't, it doesn't really want that. Um, the developer can be made to share. A portion of the parking. In other words, all right, if you're going to build that much parking, you have to have a deal with us that um, some of that parking can be. Uh, used for some a purpose that we agree on. Um, or pay a per space fee. To help advance community transportation and economic development initiatives. I'm not sure I see the nexus between that payment and the extra spaces there. I mean, I can see we, in fact, we just instituted a new requirement on um. Um, a fee, a fee based on a amount of square footage of impervious uh, area uh, to compensate for the town expenses and controlling stormwater. But um. Other than that, I I don't, I I would have a hard time seeing the nexus of such a fee. And uh, then I'll move on to one more question that's rather similar. On the next page. Um, it it suggests uh. You know, a agreement is between private parties uh, on parking that can take the form of a lease. But one user pays the other go access to parking. I know that we do allow that. I remember going into great detail on a particular lease where the. Uh. Uh, parking was going to be per a lease on the adjacent property. Um, then it says. If town can serve as a mediator between involved parties. To provide fair protections and exit clauses to agreements. Ensure land rights are protected and to maintain any grandfathering. Zoning privileges. Uh, uh, well. I suppose if a special permit is involved. But to have that kind of parking that's not on your property. We want to see the lease. And the town thus would. Examine the lease and make sure it was protective. Uh, and and perhaps that's what's meant. So I I wondered if. If you wanted to respond to any.
Yeah, yeah.
About those recommendations.
I'm glad you saw those and I'll take the second one and I'll go back to the first first. But so the second one. Yes, it is in part. That the town would want to have on file. Something that acknowledged if you're sharing parking with another landowner or something. That that's actually something legit when you're giving them a permit. So that's part of it. But the other part of it is. Actually educate and to have on file shared parking agreements. To help developers realize that is an option because some savvy developers see that. And others only see their own parking supply and don't see what, how they could, and many communities have really benefited. Especially where there's all these waivers for places that can't even build any parking. From being able to more easily get to that parking. In fact. The recommendation goes further to suggest that ultimately the town can become sort of the agent. If you were for a shared parking district approach, which more or less says. That anybody who comes in who needs parking. Can be facilitated to find it in this lot and that lot. We have a landowner over here who. Knows he's got tons of parking and he'd rather make money off of it than not. Those types of arrangements, really only a town can know, not an individual developer is easily. And that's part of what that recommendation is trying to say. Educate. As well as protect the town's interests. Your first question. Was, does that make sense before I get your first question?
Yes, yes. Now I now I appreciate on the parking, how the town could be more aware, keeping track of opportunities. So that they can be raised. Uh. Um. We we use special permits a lot in our town.
Right, right.
And often in the special permit process, these opportunities can be can be discussed. In fact, I'm remembering the shared parking that we dealt with. Was because they sought a waiver. See, we've required the parking to be owned in in another lot. Um, but in that case. They sought a waiver. Uh, they said, we want a waiver. Can we have it? We have this lease for shared.
Right.
So we worked.
Exactly. And that's and and we're trying to introduce that more clearly upfront. And you may want, you know, clear legal agreement, but many places. Actually just implement a monitoring requirement. They say, okay, you've said that. We're not going to be concerned about whether you have a lease or anything like that on file. That's fine. We are instead going to require that you tell us how many cars are parked on your lot and in the spare lot every year to prove to us. That. You're not causing a problem, which is arguably even more in the community's interest. Than having some sort of lease arrangement. That is on file once. Could change and you wouldn't know about it. So that's another approach to this that's worth considering. I I don't discourage that at all. Your first question was about places that are requiring too much. What can we do? And so actually. That recommendation has a lot to do with zoning we've seen passed recently. And the idea is in other places is that. You know, that extra increment is just. Far too much. It's above a a maximum. Nobody wants you to build that much parking. We don't think you're going to use it. So one thing we want to say to you is above a certain increment. You've got to at least make it. Shareable because somebody is going to come to you. And like we were just talking about in a moment ago. They're going to want to share it. So do whatever you can. To make it shareable, whether it's. Physically designed so that somebody can walk into the property and park there. Whether you know that your management company should be willing to issue an agreement or even, you know, rent out spaces monthly to other people. Be prepared to do that. And if you're not willing to do that. Or if in addition to that, at the very least, pay this in lieu fee. And the nexus, which is a very important concern. For. Paying something in. That would provide bicycle parking, bike lanes, better sidewalks, pedestrian protection. Is because that extra parking. That's created could potentially be creating a negative additional impact of vehicular travel, which. Is a burden on those who are trying to walk and bike, which is something you're trying to grow. And so if you're trying to grow walking and biking, but somebody is building a ton more parking for a lot more driving. They're uh, asked to offset that potential driving impact and contribute to safer pedestrian and biking facilities. That's the nexus.
Okay, thank you. I I can see a nexus, particularly if you have a requirement that you have to share if you're doing extra parking. But if they won't share. Then you pay.
Yep, exactly.
Thank you.
I think I saw Natasha had her hand up.
I just have a quick question. Um, the uh, transportation demand management, do you have any examples of a suburb that has adopted some? Um, new transportation demand management? Because that seems like. That would not be as easy as it sounds.
Well, you're one of them. Because you have it. You just have it in certain districts. I mean, I think you're at a point where. Maybe the code just needs to change and and add more districts or go townwide.
Okay.
And then there are many, I would say in the metro area. Um, I know, I think Waltham might have something like this. Watertown's getting one. Cambridge and Boston, those have had one. Salem has one. Um, those are the ones I can think of off the top of my head, but I'm sure there's others.
Okay, thank you.
Framingham might as well now that I think about it.
Paul, is your hand just remaining up or do you have another question?
Um, I I I have a comment and a question. And 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 the comment goes to one of your. Slides that you had that showed, well, if you've got mixed use sharing parking. Uh, you should be looking at the times of of when the various uses. I agree, um, we should look at formalizing that in our parking regulations. Um. Uh. That's a great idea. We successfully used that at Temple Best Shalom. When we renovated the temple. Um, we've got, we've got multiple uses. We have a children's center. That's used from eight o'clock in the morning until noon or two o'clock in the afternoon. Then we have a religious school that's going from two o'clock in the afternoon until. Five o'clock, five or six o'clock in the evening. And and then we have the sanctuary. Which is used on Saturdays and on holidays. And if you took the parking requirements. And if you took the parking requirements for each of those uses, which are used at different times and added them all together, which is what our bylaws actually require, the parking demand for the temple was huge.
Hey.
But when we were in front of the ZBA, um, Roy Kramer was our lawyer at the time, and he successfully argued to the ZBA, you know, you have to look at each of those individually, because there were three different times, and let's take the maximum number of parking for the one that's the highest number for their particular time period, and that's the parking requirement that that um, uh, you should be looking at. And I like the idea of 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 formalizing that kind of an analysis. And and the second one is a question like Natasha's, whether you've seen something in other towns. I represent a landlord who rents a building in Groton to a bank, which is next door to another bank. So both banks have ample parking. And the town of Groton came to us a few years ago and said, we don't have enough municipal parking. And we'd like to work something out with the two banks, where when the banks are closed, your lots are available for municipal parking. Nothing ever happened with that. We had multiple meetings about that. We must have had a half dozen meetings, never went anywhere. I'm wondering whether that's something that you've seen being able to work in other towns where private parking lots for businesses can be used for municipal parking when when the businesses are closed.
In fact, it's happening in your town. Uh, behind the citizens, just a few spaces, uh, years ago, just be able to pave and maintain it. They agreed that, you know, in the evenings, that's shareable with others. It's only a few spaces, but there's no formal agreement behind that, I don't think. Um, but just that is.
Where is that?
It's right behind the citizens' bank.
The citizens' bank on Highland Avenue near Trader Joe's?
In the Heights. No, 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 I think this is the one right in the center. Yeah, right behind. There's not a lot of spaces associated with it. Um, but it is right there behind um chapel, I think.
Oh, where there are signs that say reserved for citizens' bank?
Yeah, yeah.
I pulled in there on a Sunday
Yeah.
and said, well, you know, I'm going to ignore that sign because I think it's closed. But it doesn't, it doesn't indicate, there's nowhere where it says reserved for citizens' bank customers during banking hours.
It actually is, I have a picture of it. It says they, you know, it's customer parking only until five, and then after that it appears up.
I've never noticed that till five.
Right.
You have to make your own inference there.
Right. And and so there are better and more formal approaches to that. You know, we know there's actually a TD Bank in Melrose that's well known for doing just that, opening up their lots at night. There's other examples in the area. It is um, sometimes formalized through lease. It's very often just at the bank. And this is what's funny, another point to earlier to to, um, we had that discussion with Jean about educating people about sharing. Another thing to educate landowners about is just liability. Banks know liability. So all these banks, they just say to their communities, yeah, it's fine after five, go do it. They sometimes have signs. They don't write a single agreement because they know it's all covered under a standard liability agreement. That's true for any landowner. I mean, you can't expect that the public won't sometimes come onto your land, so you have those liability clauses, especially in these downtowns. But people often need to be educated that it's okay to share your parking and let somebody else come onto your land. You're covered. And that's a very common thing for banks to do.
Yeah, and I would add, Paul, um, M A P C actually provides a really good standard shared parking agreement that kind of walks through a bunch of that. It's and it's only two pages long. It's not giant. Um, but it kind of walks everyone through everything.
Adam, I apologize. I have to jump off. I had a meeting that started at ten, so I have to go to that meeting. I apologize.
I understand. No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Adam, we're, I mean, we're about wrapped up unless there are other questions or comments.
So I I appreciate that. Um, thank you very much for an excellent and thorough presentation. This, you focused obviously for a particular reason on two specific districts. Clearly, we need zoning reform for our parking bylaw across, you know, the whole of the town. That is something that perhaps we can, you know, get underway with Alex maybe for October or for May. I think that would, I think that would help. Uh, there's a lot of lessons learned here. I don't know, Amy, if there is much more of an opportunity for us to engage with Stan Tech on some more specific recommendations for, you know, for our uh, you know, for a use table and required parking at five point one point two. There were, there were a few things that you, recommendations that you talked about, like removing parking minimums and moving towards only parking maximums. I'd like to understand that a little bit more. How much more time do we have of Stan Tech?
Well, we technically have until the end of May, when the contract um finishes. But I will defer to Jason and and Liza as far as um being able to answer the question, providing more insight or guidance on making the zoning change.
Yeah, I mean, we're we're more or less, as Amy implies, at the end of our our scope and fee, we're happy to provide advice on any of that level. I think if we were to get into a more analytical um, approach to that, that should be a discussion with Amy on on how we can extend our services. But I really am very happy to provide insight and review and and advice on these things, because it's definitely for you not gonna be resolved in the next month or two. It's gonna be an ongoing discussion. Eventually, you know, you want to go to town meeting if you're gonna make changes, that's probably not until next spring. So um, that's a longer discussion. But, you know, we're we're available for advice and and feedback on things, um, just because we like this stuff at any time.
Yeah, you missed a Mr. Chair. So so um, Paul had mentioned and perhaps some other people had mentioned you know, having public meetings and, you know, well-publicized public meetings. Now, I I I, what I heard also was that Zantec, it's like, you would be part of that. And obviously, we'd have to make an arrangement. But, I mean, Paul, were you, i- is your, was your mention about that inferring that it would be a collaboration between, you know, between everyone here as far as the public meeting, as far as the presentation of what what the recommendations are, or is it something that would be more an internal?
I think I I was, I I was thinking of having it being a joint meeting of the select board with the planning board. But I questioned whether the select board would really want us there, number one. Um, and two, um, whether because the number of recommendations um, that affect the planning board are is so small compared to to the recommendations that are really within the select board's purview. Um, whether, whether it made sense, but 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 I think having having something that's well-publicized to the community about the parking recommendations, certainly by the select board, a a select board meeting and maybe a joint meeting um, would be uh, some, something that would be very, very valuable to the town.
But but what do you think with Stan Tech as well as being the?
I think that's up to the select board. I mean, if 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 your contract expires at the end of May, uh, select board has to, has to decide if they have the funds.
And it's not just a function of their uh, their contract expiring by a certain date. It also is by the scope of work that's been completed.
Right. Town, town meeting has voted a certain amount of money. So, um, you know, it's a question of whether, whether the funds are there. I wouldn't want Zantec to do something and not get paid.
Yeah, I really can't do that.
Like I said, I'm always there for good advice.
Yes, I appreciated your PowerPoint today. And I wonder, is that PowerPoint going to be made available to us um, as a separate uh, uh, retrievable document? Um, and also, uh, may the town use that PowerPoint uh, at public meetings in the future, or is it your property essentially?
No, yes and yes.
No, yeah, we can, we can share it with you very easily.
And there are plenty of others that they have access to and can use, yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's been recorded, so we have it.
There you go.
That's true.
Recording it and having it in the middle of everything is not what I need.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, uh, uh, this has been, you know, a very illustrative, uh, and very helpful for all of us. Um, we still have another item on our agenda, so uh, to go through in correspondence, but I don't think that Amy or Jason or Liza, you know, would necessarily want to stick around for that part. So is there any final comment or question about?
Yes, yes. Um, I really want to ask this question. I forgot earlier. Um, one of the reasons I've I've wanted there to be a parking study for our downtown is that very often we require applicants to engage a company like yours to provide us with a parking study, and of course, to justify their request for a waiver. Now, um, it it, now that the town has got this parking study, can we, can we use it and not be requiring applicants to um, to hire somebody who was studying?
I think we, uh, you know, probably need to have a couple of conversations with some other people in town. It's gonna depend on the type of uses that the person's using. This was, you know, this was a more, this is a broader kind of study. And it didn't necessarily, um, you know, relate to a specific site, a specific use and a specific size. So there, there, we can draw certain inferences from this, and so can any other developer, because it is a public document. But I don't know that we can use this in lieu of, you know, parking, you know, parking studies for other developments in the future.
So that remains to be seen. Okay.
I always encourage everybody and anybody to collect as much data whenever they can, as frequently as they can, but you will have full access in both GIS and spreadsheet form that to every single piece of data that was collected here, which is at the parcel and the block level as well.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. This was awesome.
Amy, thank you for.
Very informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, the the next item on our agenda is uh, correspondence that we received from uh, from Reg uh, Foster at the Needham Housing Authority. Jean and I met earlier this week, I think, with um, with Alex, uh, with Reg, um, Sonnenborg. And uh, their, uh, one of their consultants from the uh, Cambridge Housing Authority. And uh, Reg is basically saying, and also with Bob Smart, who he didn't say, but Jean, I presume that Reg is, Reg has engaged Bob Smart. Uh, they're ultimately, they came to us in February, folks, you may recall, and at the end of February, that meeting, they said that they're probably going to be pursuing a friendly forty B uh, program with a ZBA. And the purpose of this meeting was to uh, um, with Jean and I was to give us a bit of a brief that they may now intend instead to go for an October town meeting change in the zoning bylaw, which if that makes sense to do, if the timing works out, I get it. One of the reasons why they cited that is because the ZBA process is a six-month process plus appeal period, which gets them kind of after the, you know, well after October this year before they can really get certain meet certain milestones. And that doesn't work for them, because if they're looking to get financing, they need to get approval by DHCD by the end of October in order to be, in order to qualify for certain funding for that year. So uh, a zoning change in early October would potentially be another route to go. And the consequence of it doesn't happen in October, if it were to happen, for instance, in May, is that construction costs, you know, may go up. So they've asked.
I just want to interject here quickly.
One second, Paul.
Because I was talking to Reg.
Uh, one second, Paul, please. Uh, they've, so they have sent an email, a a letter to us saying that they'd like to come before us at our next meeting, which was uh, when Alex, you know, Jean and I were talking it realistically, would be the uh, June sixth meeting. I don't remember offhand what else is on our agenda that, that meeting, but um, Paul, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I was, I was talking to Reg about this during one of the breaks at town meeting. And what Reg told me was that um, DHCD, if that's, I believe that's what you just referred to, that DHCD won't even talk to them until zoning is in place. So imperative to, to the uh, Housing Authority that
But they, but they.
We handle the zoning as soon as possible.
But Reg said, Reg reported that he did have a conversation with staff at DHCD. If town meeting has adopted the zoning, um, they will process the application even though the Attorney General hasn't approved it yet.
Right, but they won't, but they won't look at it until then.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I think we need to accommodate the Housing Authority as best we can.
Agreed.
And um, um, a very good um, deep dive into the zoning that and and other documents um, that enabled the development of Linden Chambers in the first place uh, was done. Um, and surprisingly, um, it was all done per variances issued by the zoning board of appeals. Um, on land that was zoned, uh, it might have been all zoned single residents at the time. Um, re- in recent years, there was a change of some of that area to uh, general residence to accommodate two families. But um, on the underlying zoning now is single, single residence for most of the site and uh, general residence for part of the site. Um, and um, in, um, Bob Smart provided links to, or uh, yeah, links to all of the um, town meeting votes. Um, and also the land was originally town land and, or at least most of it was. And there there were deeds, I haven't looked at the deeds yet, but they may contain restrictions uh, for the use that the town may be asked to uh, um, change the restrictions on the deed. So that it doesn't necessarily involve us, that that involves the select board. But a very good information was collected in a very short time, give them credit for that.
So the um, it seems clear that, you know, they're gonna need some help. They're gonna need some help, not just from the planning board. And, you know, from a multitude of different town bodies. Uh, one of the things I think Jean, they talked about, right, was to go, they still have to go through because the the wetlands in the area, they have to go through the Conservation Commission, which I think they're in the process of doing. Um, uh, I can't remember, Alex, do you know when they are in front of the Conservation Commission?
I don't think they have a date yet, but they've already informally been in front of them and had conversations.
So they're gonna need to be formal before, I think we said they would come to us. So that would be happen before uh, June sixth, because they're dealing with a twenty-five foot and a fifty-foot buff, uh, buffers. Um, and, uh, you know, CPC may be part of the thing as as well. Um, and also, you know, the select board, because they may be requiring some specific funding from the town. So there are a lot of kind of moving parts to this. Uh, the zoning, Bob Smart did not uh, provide a draft zoning. But ultimately, what they're looking for is, as it stands now, they have uh, these sing predominantly, they have single-story buildings. They have a hundred and fifty-six units, and they want to go to about close to two hundred and fifty units. So that's a hundred more units. And on a number of acre per, uh, number of units per acre basis, I don't have my notes in front of me, but I think it was close to like fifty units an acre or something.
I think it was thirty, Adam.
Is it thirty?
Yeah.
Thirty units an acre. So they're currently now in an eighteen units an acre, and they're doubling it pretty much to uh, to thirty units an acre. Thanks for correcting me, Jean.
Yeah, I think, um, I think it come, it came, comes in right now is um, just about eighteen. Yeah, I think, um, I think it come, it came, comes in right now is, um, just about eighteen per acre. Um, but, um, there, yeah, it'd be thirty.
So my, um, so that's a massive change. They've had, I think, one meeting they said with residents about, about their proposed, their current, currently proposed plan. And then they were going to have another meeting with neighbors. I don't know how, uh, you know, what notice they gave and who they gave that notice to for those meetings. Alex, do you have an idea of how broad that community meeting would have been? So, um,
They said at the meeting that they were not only focusing on, uh, Maple Street immediately behind them and abutting them, but also, um, on London Street, uh, where the neighbors would, might be concerned about traffic, even though they're not a butters.
Right. So, uh, not as far up to Oak, but, uh, just a little farther up across the street, like next to the field, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the next, the piece of paper in our packet, page thirty of thirty, was, I asked, uh, Alex to include, and Alex, thanks for including this, the, uh, you know, the roadmap for October town meeting. The thing that I see here is that if October town meeting is October twenty-three, that's a week before the end of October. And they needed the, you know, they need some kind of approval. I don't know if this timing even works. So we need to get a little more clarity. There's also a lot that would have to happen. You know, from, you know, from us, uh, you know, this kind of a major change, some lessons learned. Um, uh, you know, from ADUs, you know, probably want to do, you know, at least a couple of you know, planning board hearing sessions on this. Uh, and to be well noticed. Um, and, you know, in the middle of the summer, it's going to be pretty challenging. We need, uh, the final language of the zoning right in the middle of this, in the beginning of the summer when everyone's away. And, um, that's assuming there's really only, I think, one hearing. So I
Well, I, I, Adam, so Adam, so the, so the concern, absolutely valid concern, no question about that. Um, actually very good points to make sure we're stressing this. So we're talking about the, you know, the language for legal notice, you know, you know, sometime first half of July is what it's saying here. Then obviously the final language for the town meeting is middle of.
September, it's the end of September.
Yeah, yeah, middle, uh, September nineteenth. So I, I mean, obviously we want the language as, as correct as possible for the July eleventh. But, but certainly we're going to have, certainly there's, you know, again, it's, it's the middle of the summer. Um, you know, not, not, not the greatest time to have community involvement. That being said, um, I think it's, and I think, I think we can make it work as long as we're publicizing enough places. And, um, I, I think we can make it work, but, but actually lessons learned. We have to publicize in a lot of different places.
So I think, uh, I, I, just so we're clear, you know, I absolutely support, like at our last meeting with, you know, in February with, with Reg, I had said that the planning board's town's ready. You know, to do what, you know, to do what we can to help them. And that certainly is true. I know from all of you as colleagues and also equally true for me. Um, if we can make this work, that's great. I need a little more clarity because the October twenty-third deadline or date, you know, it's going to be a huge effort to make that sweeping change because they're also talking about going up to four stories.
Glad you mentioned that.
Four stories now?
Four, you know, four stories. Now that's, that's.
One of the buildings at the rear with a property, um, lowers its elevation. Uh, very similar argument to remember from Ozzy.
Yeah.
The elevation is lower, so we should be able to go higher. But you remember from Hartley Graymont, uh, you know, we didn't get a, any support for that. And part of the issue was four stories. So, um,
This is our gene, gene, excuse me, Courtney Graymont was going up to, at one point it was eighty-five feet. How do you agree with that?
Yeah, we brought it down though to. Yeah, but, um, but that's, uh, what, and here's, here's another, if I may, uh, Adam.
Yes, please.
Um, Bob Smart suggested an overlay district. I don't see the need for an overlay district when the only underlying allowed uses are, uh, res- single-family residents and, uh, general residents. It's not like our, uh, other districts that have overlays with underlying zoning allows all sorts of things. Um, I, I just simply, they just go in with a zone. Um, however, none of our existing apartment zones fit this, the need. And we anticipated that. That's what we said in the housing plan. Uh, we have to wait and see about what's proposed for this site. So, uh, we'll have to write up some new apartment zone. Um, if that's what we're, uh, end up doing for this site. And I hope people will be content to make it be by right. Um, because, uh, the housing authority owns the land. Um, uh, the, uh, it may be through the, uh, um, amendment of the town deeds, there'd still be some kind of restriction on how the land can be used only for, uh, um,
Seniors.
Low income, elderly and, and disabled housing and so forth. Like by right. And the reason for that is it will help us very much with the MBTA communities law to have this acreage uh, zoned, uh, con- consistent with that, that law. And even though the site, uh, owned by the housing authority is intended to be used for elderly, uh, the zoning would not impose, the zoning itself would not oppose an age requirement or, or any, um, um, income, um, any affordability requirement other than whatever we're we're using generally, which has been twelve and a half percent. So those are a couple of other issues that we, we talked about at the meeting.
But are you suggesting that, so instead of an overlay district, are you suggesting that a general change to some of our zoning related to apartment style?
Or, or a change to, uh?
Just, just this, just these lots.
We have a category called apartment, um,
A three.
Three, uh, apartment A three. No land is zoned for it in our town at all. It's a very low density, uh, apartment zone um, that exists in our zoning but has never been used. We can just take that category just so as not to create an apartment A four since apartment A three has never been used and create the dimensions that we need for this zone. And it will only be for this zone, for this land. I think that's the simplest approach.
And a map, and a map change to identify this.
Or map change, of course, yeah.
So what's, what's?
Same thing as an overlay district. It, it's, it's just technically a little different way to, 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 to get there. Mr. Chair, it's been more than an hour and a half.
I agree.
A job meeting during the day.
Yeah.
Can we wrap it up, please?
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, moved. Second.
Right, right.
Uh, motion.
One of us made the motion.
Already, already with the motion, Paul with the second, uh, any discussion here and none will come to the vote. Gene McKnight.
Aye.
Artie Crocker.
Aye.
Paul Albert.
Aye.
The chair of the tie were unanimously resolved to adjourn. Thank you all. Have a good weekend.